Hearing for Wednesday, August 26, 2022, order. At this time, it is exactly 6:00 PM. And before we commence our hearing this evening, we have a notice to read. This is the Provo City Planning Commission Chair's statement regarding Open and Public Meetings Act. In accordance with Utah Code 52-4-2074, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission with an anchor location such as the council chambers presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present there. There are facts upon which I have made these determination. Utah has been in a declared state of emergency due to novel coronavirus 2019 or COVID-19 since March 6, 2020, a disease outbreak which the World Health Organization has characterized as a pandemic. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention state that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close contact with one another. The spread is through respiratory droplets when an infected person coughs, sneezes, or talks, and it may be spread by people who are non-symptomatic. Federal, state, and local authorities have recommended that individuals limit public gatherings or face masks and follow social distancing guidelines, that individuals exposed to persons experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 self-quarantine for 14 days, and that individuals experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 self-isolate to prevent and control the continuing spread of COVID-19. Notwithstanding that Utah generally and Utah County specifically have been moved to the low-risk or yellow phase, reported COVID-19 cases in Utah County have more than doubled since May 31, 2020. Physical distancing measures will be difficult to set up and maintain in the council chambers. Therefore, for the next 30 days, all meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission will be conducted entirely via electronic means. Planning Commission meetings are broadcast live and available later on demand Agendas and support materials are available at provo.org/PlanningCommission. To make a public comment or to join a meeting via telephone, follow the instructions provided on public notices of each meeting. To send comments to the Planning Commission members or weigh in on current issues, email the Planning Commission members at dspublichearings@provo.org. Thanks for your patience while I read through that. All right, we have on tonight's agenda originally eight items. Items six and seven on that agenda have been continued to a later date. The items that are marked with asterisks are legislative, and the Planning Commission will be making recommendations to municipal council on those items. The items that do not have an asterisk are administrative, and the planning commissioners will be making a judgment on those issues. So without further ado, we will start the hearing. With items one, two, and three, they are related, and I will read them in together. Item number one, Paul Washburn requests a general plan amendment from commercial to residential. I'm sorry, before we do that, I need to take her roll call. So sorry, planning commissioners, I will call your name, and please state your name for the record and whether you have a conflict of interest in any of the items on our agenda this evening. Ms. Jones?
Hallie Jones, no conflict.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
No conflict.
Thank you. Ms. Jensen?
Lisa Jensen, no conflict.
Thank you. Mr. Henry?
Henry, no conflict.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips?
Russell Phillips, no conflict.
Thank you. Mr. Knudsen?
Robert Knudsen, no conflict.
Thank you. And Deborah Jensen, no conflicts. Sorry about that, I almost forgot to take the roll call. All right, so item one. Paul Washburn requests a general plan amendment from commercial to residential for the Super 8 motel located at 1555 North Canyon Road in the general commercial or CG zone. This is in the Carterville neighborhood, and Mr. Ardmore will present item one. Item two, related, Paul Washburn requests a zone change from general commercial CG to campus mixed-use CMU for the Super 8 motel located at 1555 North Canyon Road in the Carterville neighborhood. And again, Mr. Ardmore will present item two. And item three, Paul Washburn requests project plan approval to convert the existing Super 8 motel to married student housing in a proposed campus mixed-use zone located at 1555 North Canyon Road in the Carterville neighborhood. And again, Mr. Ardmore will present all three items. Mr. Ardmore?
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. So the applicant, Paul Washburn, is interested in turning the Super 8 motel on Canyon and University Parkway into married housing. This hotel has been there for quite some time. In the recent months, it has been somewhat of a nuisance for the adjacent landowners, for Provo Police, and for the neighborhood. So the applicant is looking for a reuse of the building. This reuse to residential development requires the applicant to change the zone and the general plan. So as you stated, the general plan, which is now commercial, would have to be changed to residential. And the zone would have to change from the commercial zone to, he's selected the campus mixed-use zone. So this slide is just showing the property itself, the current zoning, CG there. The blue to the south is the facility zone for BYU apartments down adjacent. And on the general plan map, the red is commercial, and the yellow down there is residential. So as we go through the site plan, I'm just going to kind of describe the the project as proposed. It's showing converting the motel rooms to residential units, anticipates 95 studio or one-bedroom units. And the conversion would increase parking demand from what is shown on this site plan is 111 stalls. The code would say that 145 stalls is needed. So the applicant has also brought forward to you a transportation demand management program and is requesting a reduction of parking for this project. In addition to the parking issue, there are landscaping issues which I'll elaborate on as we move forward. So the reason the applicant is showing 107 to 111, this particular plan shows 111 stalls, is because the landscaping requirements of Section 152090 are not met. So we've talked to the applicant, we've told him that it's going to be hard to meet both the parking lot landscaping requirements and the parking count requirements for his proposal with the number of units that he's proposing. And he has chosen to move forward with just trying to meet a reduced parking demand and not showing any complaints with the parking lot landscaping. So this was the first floor plan. You can see most of these are just the standard hotel rooms. That's a studio hotel room, which he is anticipating to convert to a studio apartment and installing a stove top unit in the hotel room. There is the amenities space that he has met the CMU standard for the amenities space with the pool and open areas here. He has a two-bedroom unit, which would most likely be a manager's unit for the apartments on the second floor. Again, most of them are just the studio conversions of the hotel rooms. So you have 49 units there and 47 units on the first floor. Here's a rendering of what the architect and the applicant were. I'm just painting what is currently a red brick building, painting it white, installing a new door on the Canyon Road side to meet that code regulation, the design standard of having a front-facing door to the street. And here's the elevations here. If I could just elaborate on on staff's position, you could see that we've recommended denial for the general plan, the zone change, and the project plan. I just want to elaborate on kind of our reasons for that. The TDM, first of all, the Transportation Demand Management Program offered by the applicant and Hales Engineering. It argues as points for reduction, proximity to campus and transit, bicycle parking facilities, and a lack of visitors due to the size of the units. The applicant is arguing that that size of unit, the person renting it wouldn't have visitors. The proximity to BYU campuses is obvious, but Steph believes that the minimal living space without a lot of storage or any real living area other than the bed doesn't make it ideal for married student housing. The 32 bicycle parking stalls cited in the report from Hales Engineering are not shown on the plan. So it's hard to go along with that as a reason for reduction. Also making the case that the tenants won't have any visitors. Steph believes this is problematic. I've lived in smaller units, and I still had friends and family that I wanted to see. So the idea that visitors won't be coming to these apartments, I think, is kind of a rough assumption to make. Steph, again, questions of livability of the dual units. Concerned about the the type of tenants that will rent here. We don't see a lot of married couples living in these studio units, so then we have the turnover rate and maybe some of the issues that we're currently experiencing with the Super 8 motel. On top of that, we have some code requirements that have not been met with this proposal. They're itemized here for you. The street-side setback is a maximum of 20 feet in the CMU zone, which here is not being met on the north side. Building should be vertically articulated to differentiate the ground floor and upper floors. This is a design standard. It's not one of the major issues we have with it, but there is really no articulation between the floors as the building is. 50% of the parking must be shaded at tree maturity. This is a very recent adoption of parking lot landscaping. I think it'd be hard to have the first project come in and not meet that. If you look at the parking lot, you can plainly see that 50% tree coverage is not met. Another landscaping requirement of a lot of a shade tree for every four parking spaces has not been met. And then the perimeter parking of one truck for every three feet has not been met. They have provided trees on the west side that would meet the ordinance, but have failed to show anything else. So for these reasons, we're recommending denial. And I'm open to any questions you might have about my reports.
Thank you, Mr. Ardmore. Commissioners, do we have any questions from Mr. Ardmore? And if you could use the raise your hand, little icon at the bottom?
Mr. Knudsen has asked the size of the units. I'm hoping the applicant can speak to that, because I don't. Unfortunately, I don't think I put it in my in my report. I apologize for that, but I'm sure the applicant will be able to address that.
Ms. Jensen?
So I just have a few questions. Some of them might be clarifications for Mr. Ardmore. On page three of item one, in section B, it says, "Your response is, 'While both purposes are valid and important, the related project plan and the inability to meet several CMU zones standards shows that what is being asked for does not best serve the public purposes described.' So I just want to verify that you actually have spoken with the applicant about this, and so is it impossible for these things to be met, or has he just declined to do it yet?
With the amount of units he's proposing, it would be impossible to meet both the parking lot landscaping standards and the parking count standards.
And as to that setback requirement, that was one of the things on the north side that hadn't been met. That would require that the building actually be demolished in a portion of it in order to meet that, correct?
It actually could be extended out towards that street, out towards University Parkway. They could extend it out to meet that 20-foot maximum without too much work on that north end of the building. They wouldn't have to demolish it in any case.
I thought you said there wasn't enough room already. Were they asking to make it bigger?
No, so this zone, the CMU zone, anticipates a 20-foot maximum setback from the street. And on that north side, the building's setback more than that.
Okay, so that's more of a design standard to make it pedestrian-friendly. Okay. Then my other question, I guess they kind of go together, but the proposal isn't addressing these, but you have spoken with the applicant about them, so he's aware that these things need to be addressed, and he's choosing not to.
Yeah, we've had a lot of communication with the applicant through the CRC review process and kind of noting our concerns, and we've met face-to-face at the, at our building here. But he just wanted to move forward with this.
Okay, my last question is, on this one that you have up right now, it says 35 OCC. Can you tell us what the 34 OCC and 35 OCC mean on this rendering?
I believe those have to do with building code occupancy standards. But I'm not sure.
All right, I just wanted, if that was actually the occupancy, it didn't match with the bed, so I just wanted to make sure there wasn't. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff commissioners? I have one, Mr. Ardmore. Also on page three, item C about general plan policies, goals, and objectives. I think just my observation over the past several years has been that we are reluctant to down-regulate property that's on commercial to something like residential use, because commercial, you know, once we let it go, we probably are not going to get it back somewhere else for the city. And that is definitely an economic development issue. Did that enter into your decision at all to recommend not approving the general plan amendment?
It was in the discussion with staff, and I think that the council, some of the council will share that concern, a loss of additional commercial areas in the city.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Comments? All right, seeing we do not have any further questions from Mr. Ardmore right now, I will invite the applicant, Mr. Washburn, to present his project.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. We do not have your screen, however.
Okay. You good? Oh, dear. Okay, there I am. Sorry. Okay. Thank you, commissioners, and appreciate the opportunity to visit with you this evening about this project. I want to talk a little bit about the history of the Super 8 motel in that location. It was built in 1985. As the years have gone by, the motel industry has changed quite a bit, and is really now more oriented to freeway locations. Midtown motels and hotels have been much less attractive to the traveling public than they were in the past, and really more attracted to persons unable to secure longer-term housing. The current Super 8, I think Mr. Ardmore alluded that it's had a checkered past. That's probably a very polite way to say it. Under the prior owner, there had been the side of drug dealing, prostitution, transits, a lot of disorderly behavior, fighting, and it became a regular stop for the Provo Police. The absentee landlord who previously lived in the property, I think, clearly should have done a better job of renting the property, but one of the things that is a problem with the motel is if someone comes with the rent for the night, you don't be, you can't order a credit check or a number of other things you would do for longer-term housing. You're pretty well required to rent it to people as they come through the door or face a discrimination problem. So Mr. Tatian, a few months ago, as developer out of California, but has a number of properties within the state, and former BYU graduate, has loved Tyseley community, acquired the site, and has undergone so far a cleanup of the property. It's not the way we would like it to be, but we're underway doing it. He and his new management have vacated many of the previous tenants. And as they've evaluated a business plan for the future, they have been approached by a number of people looking for a short to midterm housing commitment. And short-term to midterm, basically three months to a year commitment for leases. Apartments for married couples is in a very short supply countywide, particularly in Provo. And landlords now are routinely asking for two- to five-year leases for couples that are either marrying midsemester, waiting for job offers, internships, or near graduation. These long-term leases have created a lot of difficulties in finding a place to live, and have forced many of them to look outside of the local area, you know, living as far away as Paterson or Spanish Fork. And then they end up driving to the campus several times a day, creating even more of a traffic problem than we would normally have. The property, first thing I want to say is if the property were vacant, I don't know that we would be making this proposal. I think some of the comments Mr. Ardmore has made about being able to have, you know, I think we're eight feet off on the setback adjacent to University Parkway. Parking lot was not designed to a previous standard, not a new standard. We would probably be looking at something different. However, the property is there, it's built. There are commitments to renters. It's not a case of we can just abandon it or, you know, let it fall down. So we're trying to find the best way to utilize the property in its, near its current configuration. The property does offer some unique advantages to be converted to student housing. From a transportation and walkability standpoint, it is extremely well-located. There's a bike lane within a block of the property. The Marriott Center is less than a three-minute walk. The Business School is a six-minute walk. The library is a nine-minute walk. The Utah Valley Express Station, the bus mass transit, is adjacent to the property with the ability to shuttle residents to the mall, BYU campus, UDU, downtown Provo, and a number of other destinations. Within a two-block radius, there are 25 places to eat, a drugstore. The property itself includes a large pool house, a jacuzzi, a fitness room, a laundry area, there's a business center. There is a breakfast area currently in the building that can be converted into additional amenities, including some locker storage for tenants to be able to put, store things, not necessarily always inside their room. There's room for bicycle storage. We have access from, you know, two streets, University Parkway and Canyon Road. The other thing we have with the old lobby is we have a very safe drop-off and pickup point for Uber and Lyft drivers, so they can sit inside, safe, warm, or air-conditioned until the ride leaves, or ride comes to pick them up. And when they're dropped off, they've got a secure location just within feet of their car door to be a place where they feel safe. As part of our application process, we had numerous meetings with the staff trying to determine the best way forward utilizes property in a way that's more beneficial to the public. Mr. Maxfield was our original planner, and with his help, we determined the zoning categories to be utilized. We have met with the neighborhood chair and had a neighborhood meeting. And at least our understanding is we had pretty good support for the change of use in the project. As proposed, the motel would be removed, would be remodeled. It consists of 95 single-bed units and one manager's unit that would have two bedrooms. Site currently has 111 parking stalls. The ordinance does give the planning commission and council to ability to reduce the required parking if they find other provisions for transportation have been met. Uh, as I mentioned before, the walkability to campus, the access to bicycles, a secure area for Uber, Uber and Lyft riders, access to the bus. All would allow that to happen. Parking on-site would be done with assigned stalls and sticker permits. Now, and anyone needing to park more than a single vehicle would not be allowed to be a tenant. Uh, with that, we believe we have about a 10% excess of parking that would allow for, uh, guest parking when, when that happens. Uh, the side yard setback on University Avenue, we exceed the requirements of the zone by eight feet. There was a concern earlier that we needed to relocate our entry to Canyon Road, and we have provided a plan that does that. Uh, the requirement to vertically articulate, uh, ground floor from upper floors. If our current plan doesn't meet that, I think we can do that with paint and maybe some architectural features to the outside of the building. Uh, the parking lot was designed to the standards of the city, had at the time of construction. We can shade much of the parking lot with trees planted in the landscape areas. But I don't know that we're ever going to be able to meet the full 50% shade requirement. However, we have provided an upgraded, uh, landscaping plan. If you've driven past the property recently, I think you'll notice that they've gone through and taken out a lot of the older shrubbery. We're in the process now of trying to upgrade that and beautify the site. Uh, if we can change the zone and convert the property to longer-term housing, longer-term being more than a night, but somewhere between three months to a year, uh, we think we can eliminate the problems with the site in the past. Uh, longer-term leases allow us to do reasonable due diligence, we do credit checks, we use references, all the things that we need to ensure that the tenants would support the neighborhood that we'd like to have in the city. I guess the, uh, question came up about downzoning. The only thing I can say to that is we believe exist, with what we have now, this is probably the best use for the property and the one that is going to create the least amount of problems for the city as a whole and provide a vitally needed uh, resource for students that just need a place to live for five months or seven months or whatever, not, not wanting to commit to that longer, uh, term lease. It may not be possible for them, again, because of jobs, uh, relocating out of the area. We can continue to run it as a motel. And we've done a lot of research into that, but as I expressed at the beginning, uh, of my presentation, inner-city motels are struggling everywhere. I think we can do everything we can to clean up the site. But this is not a site that is going to be attractive to the traveling public. And while we will do the best we can to make sure we don't have problems that the previous owners had, uh, I think you can count on it. It's probably going to be hard to do as good a job that way as we did at those apartments. So anyway, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. And the architect is here as well, if he had questions for you.
You're muted, Deborah.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Washburn? Mr. Gonzalez?
And, uh, there was a question about the square footage for the units.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. 300 square feet. It's, they vary from 295 to 301 square feet. So roughly 300 square feet per unit.
And then could I also ask a follow-up question, I guess, while I have? In regards to this being proposed as married student housing, how, how do you enforce that? I, I'm really naive to this. Uh, how would you enforce that? From non-BYU students or, or non-students or non-marrieds from, uh, signing contracts for, uh, short-term contracts on the property?
I'm not an attorney and I'm probably not the best person to ask that question to. Uh, in discussions with Mr. Tashian, two things have come up. They have been really unindated with people asking for this kind of an arrangement. And he believes that he can achieve the occupancy he needs to make the project viable based on BYU students who are looking for short-term housing. How are you limits have outside of BYU students? Uh, I'm sure there's a way to do it, but I, I'm not, I'm not qualified to answer that question. I apologize.
Any other questions for Mr. Washburn?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Knudsen.
Uh, you say that these inner-city hotels are having a hard time surviving. Uh, seems to me like this one could do very well if it were maintained properly. Seems like people would like to come, stay in a nice hotel, close to the stadium, close to the Marriott Center, close to where they play baseball, close to where they come to watch their kids graduate. Seems to me like that's not true. That people would come and stay there, close to BYU, in the inner city, if it were a place they could feel like they were safe.
In response to that, I think I agree with that partially. Game nights and at graduation, you could probably build the motel. And that would be maybe 30 nights a year, 40 nights a year. And unfortunately, these kind of, uh, facilities have to have occupancy 360 days a year. And so while what you're alluding to may be possible, though, my understanding is that over the past, you know, 35 years, the, the, uh, project has been there, there have been some renovations, and what you're describing has not happened.
I'll, I'll make a, I'll ask a quick question. I'll make a comment. It sounds like it could be a combination of an owner and our management issue. Uh, certainly COVID-19 has impacted hotel occupancies around the world, quite honestly. Uh, but this is a key location. And there are a lot of people who do business with BYU. And so those could be potential customers during the remainder of the year besides special events. Uh, the fact that it's rundown and perhaps not well-managed probably has quite a big impact because business travelers are not going to stay in a sketchy facility. I've personally stayed in a few Super 8s that were super nice. So it's, uh, not necessarily anything to do with the brand, but I would, I would put forward that it's probably more of a management and maintenance issue. And marketing, all of that.
Uh, the new owners have done a lot of research into that and I'm, I'm afraid they don't, they don't agree. People that are doing business with BYU, uh, irrespective, are typically going to park next to the freeway. Freeway locations are where, uh, is where things are happening. And that's not just true in Provo. That's, that's true everywhere. Older properties in downtown Salt Lake, uh, are struggling uh, when they're competing against freeway locations. So, uh, the new managers, the Tashians, have, I think have done a very good job of trying to clean things up and move tenants, uh, do the best they could to screen the tenants that are coming in. They've been doing that for the last four or five months. I don't think we've had near the police, uh, issues that we've had in the past. But it's not working financially for them. So, uh, I, I guess that's all I can say to that. We've, after, after a lot of, uh, soul-searching and trying to find the best way to do it, this seems not only be a good way to make the property work, but also to fill a need for students that are looking for a shorter-term lease commitment.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, uh, just to kind of follow up with Deborah's comment, uh, looks like more and more, uh, uh, the possibility, even in the coming months, that with school being moved online, classes being online, that proximity to campus, at least in the immediate future, may not play as big a role, uh, for students. So I mean, that's one, just one comment or thought.
Thank you. Mr. Henry?
Uh, just curious, Mr. Washburn, what are the, the anticipated rents for these units going to be?
It'd be in the, probably between $600 and $800 a month. That would also include all utilities.
Uh, internet as well, internet, TV, that kind of utilities?
Yes, it'd be furnished and they would have the TV and the internet as well. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
If I could just respond to one of the, the previous, uh, commissioners' question about proximity to campus and, and the world we find ourselves in now with the COVID. I have a granddaughter who is, uh, up at Utah State, has committed herself to a year lease and has had most of her program canceled because of COVID. We, things are changing, but I think, uh, being able to make a shorter-term commitment uh, on rents until our health situation resolves itself may be fairly attractive as well.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Yeah, um, I am curious. I have seen that there are upgrades planned for the exterior of the motel. I was just wondering what, um, renovations were anticipated in addition to the added sinks to make it a livable environment?
Uh, the, the building will be basically gutted and start from scratch. It will be completely redecorated. Uh, 10 of the rooms are going to be combined into five rooms. So we'll have, they'll all be one bedroom, but, uh, there will be some apartments that will be enlarged. So they've got probably a larger living room area. Uh, everything would, of course, be repainted, uh, upgrading the fire control system, re-carpeted, uh, on the first floor for all the, uh, amenities, uh, or the current breakfast rooms, all of those will be remodeled. Uh, replacing all the furnishings, uh, upgraded cabinets and storage areas all the way through. It will be a brand-new facility for someone to go through.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Yeah, Deborah, I'd like to raise another question.
Yes, Mr. Knudsen.
They're planning on it being married. It seems to me that the lack of parking is going to be a terrible problem. If it's married, you're going to have a husband who has a car and a wife that has a car. They're already short on the parking by what, there is 34 stalls at least. Uh, I just can't see that working. I can see it causing additional problems with all of the local places around where they can park. It's just going to cause problems with other people. Another question I had is, is they met with the neighborhood chair? And what neighborhood is this? And who's, uh, the chair for that, uh, neighborhood?
I can address that. So it's a Carterville neighborhood. Sarah S.A.
Okay. Have they been contacted, met with?
Um, from what I understand, yeah.
Uh, we had, met with the neighborhood chair, uh, both the owners of the property and I have. And then we had a neighborhood Zoom meeting and we had about a dozen participants in that meeting as well. Uh, the issue you raised on parking is, is a good one. As I mentioned before in my presentation, uh, everything will be by a permit and a sticker. And if you have more than one car, you don't get to live there. There are no residences immediately adjacent to this. We have some apartments that are also on stickered, uh, assigned parking. I don't think that there's likelihood that this is going to cross over any of those, uh, those people. And we are not trying to compete for a large segment of the, of the, uh, market out there. Uh, BYU has, you know, 20,000 students into it. We're really looking for basically 100 couples.
Thank you. Ms. Jensen?
I have a few questions for the developer. Uh, how will you, Mr. Washburn, how do you think they're going to regulate the guest parking with only 10% extra?
Well, we have an onsite manager who will, I think, patrol the parking lot. Uh, guest parking is typically something that would happen for two or three hours, maybe. Generally a shorter time than that. Uh, I think, you know, the, the manager, uh, the guest parking is going to be located next to the entry of the project, so it'll be easy to monitor. Again, uh, the tenants that are going to be living there will be assigned a stall. They will have a, a parking sticker in their window, so that should be very easy to manage as well.
Um, since changing the general plan and the zoning is a huge deal and, um, our chair has expressed that already. My question for you is, would, would, do you think the develop, you guys would consider combining some rooms um, to make some of the units larger and have less units overall and therefore less parking required? Or maybe making it, let me ask this, this next question in combination with that. What about a combined commercial residential use that would be closer to the commercial, the intention of the commercial zone and general plan?
Uh, as far as combining rooms, we're going to be doing that anyway. And as time goes on and we can get a better feel of the market, it's not out of the question that we would do that again in the future, depending what, uh, the market demands. We were going to be marketing these as studio apartments and depending on the situation, uh, I suspect if we had a single, uh, professional, uh, or a married UDU couple, uh, we probably would consider, you know, renting to them too. But given the scarcity for BYU people, we, we really believe we're going to be able to satisfy our occupancy requirements from that, uh, pretty much alone.
Any other questions, commissioners? Yes, Mr. Henry?
Just one question. Um, I, I love the idea of, of reusing the building. Uh, it's already there. It is existing. The, the effort it takes to tear something down and rebuild it seems a little bit wasteful in some instances. But my question is, if this were to be denied, would there be any interest, uh, to tear down and rebuild, maybe do a mixed-use facility or some other facility that, uh, commercial, uh, in that area? I'm not sure what the, the market for that area would be. I know there is a lot of housing already. Uh, but, uh, it, basically, do you, do you have any plans if this doesn't get approved? What, what next?
I think the plan, if it doesn't go approved, is it would probably go back to a motel. Uh, the suggestion would try and combine it with the commercial use. I think that's something we can look at. Uh, I'm struggling to think what commercial use that would be. The, it seems like the commercial areas along that section, uh, at best are struggling a little bit now anyway. Fast food, uh, seems to be doing quite well. We've got a building just immediately to the south of this that, uh, is a, I think, a Mexican Mormon, uh, museum. Uh, BYU has occupied a lot of the space around it. It's, I, I guess I can say I can't, you know, we would try and find something. I just don't know what it's going to be. Uh, again, we have a fairly heavy financial commitment in the building. And that commitment needs to be made, not only back to the owners of the building, but obviously to the banks and financial institutions that they're committed to as well. but obviously to the banks and financial institutions that they're committed to as well.
The only commercial use I could think of was air-conditioned storage units.
Well, we'll have those in there, but I think they come with the apartment. So maybe we could charge a separate fee and figure out a way to tax that or something.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Washburn.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Washburn? All right, seeing none, then I will open up this portion of the hearing to public comment for items one, two, and three. And I would ask if any neighborhood chairs have weighed in on this to hear their comments first, please?
There are no neighborhood chairs.
Thank you.
I do have one public comment.
Thank you.
Caller 011, go ahead. Hello, call 011, go ahead.
Yes, this is Paul Evans. I live in the Pleasantview neighborhood, which is immediately adjacent to this proposal. Just remind the planning commission that last year, we finished making plans for the Tifanocas Towers to replace the Utah Community Credit Union, Utah County, whatever it is, UCTU building on the corner Stadium Avenue and Canyon Road, which is just on the other side, north side of the stadium. That also is scheduled for married students or at least couples. One-bedroom apartments is what was planned in there. And, and parking was, for then, as for this project, a very important aspect of ensuring its compatibility with the neighborhood. As a neighborhood, we have, for the last year, I guess the current owner passions to purchase the property in November of 2019. So it's been operating under the current owner for 10 months now, or at least nine months. And, and so we're very familiar with the residents who are in there and how the place was managed for the last nine months. So parking remains an unresolved issue, and an action on the general plan, the zoning change and the project plan really should be continued to get these issues clarified. Because I think the only other alternative is for the planning commission to forward a negative recommendation to the council and certainly to hold off on the project plan until the details, the staff have identified or are taken care of. The housing types envisioned in the development are unique in Provo. You know, provision for leases less than a year add to the diversity of living space we have in Provo. So I think it's something that's worth, you know, working for to get it right and to make it work, but, but I just can't be forward at this point. Personally, do not believe that an attempt to rent only to BYU-associated individuals can really be fulfilled. If there are vacancies and there are non-BYU people with cash, there's no long-term viability in business models that would refuse the cash. So if the price and conditions are right for the leasing, then this development will continue to get a diversity of applicants and tenants. Again, if there are vacancies and if there are applicants, the vacancy will be filled regardless of BYU affiliation. As much as one wishes to call this a BYU-centric development, the likelihood of such a claim should not deter the creation of this flavor of housing in Provo. I'd just point out that BYU, by contract, tells students that there is no parking at all for their Heritage Hall of Development. All of those apartments have no parking. By contract, that has not worked. People still bring their cars. They still have the cars. That's going to be an issue. The commercial loss is interesting in that the applicant asks for the campus mixed-use zoning. The campus mixed-use zoning envisions a combination of commercial and residential activity on the property. There's no commercial activity that's associated with this. I just point out, we had the same issue with the Tifanocas Towers of the UCCU property, and I think it warrants a discussion by the planning commission and planning commission staff on the exclusive use of this campus mixed-use zone instead of anticipated alternative zones. Why is it we keep getting CMU as the request when there's no mixed-use that's envisioned in these developments? So a few questions for the applicant, and that is, what percent of the current leases, after they close and reopen, are to individuals with BYU affiliation? And how many of the, given the demand, how many of are currently leased? Would be an interesting, at least, point to begin to understand how this is gonna go forward. So those are the comments that I have. For me, I happy to respond to any questions the commissioner may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans. And, Mr. Washburn, we will make time for you to respond to any questions you hear from the public after this portion. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no other callers calling in.
Did you want to hold it open a little longer, or?
I'll hold it open for another 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there are no other callers.
Great, thank you so much. All right, we will close items one, two, and three to public comment at this time. And I will turn it back over to Mr. Washburn if he wanted to address any of those items that Mr. Evans, the chair, mentioned.
Yes, I'd be glad to. I think one question was why we were looking for the campus mixed-use zone. That was recommended to us by staff. I agree, it's probably not a perfect fit, but all the other available zones were significantly less perfect than that was. And that seemed to be the, the best match that we could have. I think the other question was how many leases we have with tenants right now. Currently, we're a motel. We can't do that. We can have someone stay as long as, I think, 29 days, and then they have to vacate the room and leave. So we do have some married couples in there waiting hopefully approval, but we haven't been able to make the commitment longer than, you know, a 30-day period because we're, we're a motel at this point, not a, not an apartment.
All right, thank you. Right, I will turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion. And please keep in mind, we have three separate motions we'll be making. One for a general plan amendment, commercial residential. One for a zone change from general commercial to campus mixed-use, and the third for a project plan. So I'll look for any discussion from the commissioners. Ms. Jensen?
I think we've asked all the questions that we might have. Maybe there's more. But I, I feel like this is a great idea, but we still haven't come up with a way to make it great enough that it's worthy of getting rid of commercial designation. I think if a plan came back with a lower occupancy that addressed some of the issues raised by staff, or a plan came back with a way to put commercial use in with it so that it was actually worthy of the campus mixed-use zoning, then it would feel more appropriate for the area and less of a, of a grasp for whatever will work. I love the idea of meeting a new need for housing and diversifying the housing stock, but I just, I feel like this will just bring it up just a tad from the motel status, and even though it will look nicer and hopefully be more attractive, and I, I just don't think it's enough of an improvement that it would warrant all the changes that would be required to make it happen.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez? You're muted, Mr. Gonzalez.
All right, I was just gonna say, I'm actually more amenable to flexibility with any standards or deviations in the plan. But the, the change from a commercial to a purely residential, albeit short-term residential, it's harder to make those accommodations or be, for, for me to be more flexible with a parking standard or a landscaping thing in a different type of commercial development. I could see where, where having more flexibility would be easy for me to support.
All right, thank you. Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I think that when it comes down to it, there's a real need for housing for this demographic. We just don't have a lot available for young couples whose budgets are maybe tighter. But I do agree with the other council members in that concerns over a lack of parking, concerns that the renovation wouldn't be done to actually make it suitable living as opposed to becoming kind of a rundown area. But if I could see a proposal that maybe combined a few more of the apartments to lower the demands on parking. I also do feel like it's worth pointing out that it is pretty near one of the bus stops, and it is near to campus. So the idea that a couple could share a car is a bit more feasible in this particular area as opposed to somewhere farther away from that public transit, so.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I'll, I'll just weigh in for a moment on the zoning portion. And for some of the commissioners that are a little bit newer to the planning commission, the campus mixed-use zone was established to encourage high-intensity development. And the project that Mr. Evans was referring to was actually much more intensive development. It included a parking deck. They did have reduced parking approved, but they are adjacent to a UVX stop. They provided covered bicycle parking and bicycle repair facilities inside of their parking deck. So it was a much more intensively built site, which more closely resembles what the CMU zone was established to do. The other areas that have been zoned CMU are along 800, right next to BYU. There may be some others as well, but those are the ones I'm most familiar with. And they do indeed encourage a mix of commercial at the street level to activate the street, encourage pedestrian activity, support transit investment, all of those good things. So for me, this project is not accomplishing really any of those. And I agree with Ms. Jensen that it's, let's see, what can we do to make, to make this investment in real estate work for us? And, and I, I am opposed to downzoning or down, down, downcategorizing the land use from commercial to residential. I think it's not appropriate in this case. Mr. Henry?
I do commend the applicant for their creativity on this. And I do love the idea of the housing type and the, the, the alternative for people. I can think of several people that this would be a perfect housing type for. A friend of mine that actually moved from Brazil that, that needed some, some housing in this type. I was a little shocked at the price. Five years ago, I was renting a three-bedroom duplex for $700 in the Carterville neighborhood. So that price really kind of shocked me, for a studio to be in that same price range. But I guess if the rest of the rental market has gone up that much, again, anything we can do to provide more affordable housing, I'm all for. But I echo some of the other sentiments. This just doesn't quite meet the standards. As well as this particular application, to me, is missing some key design features. Parking, I am definitely one of those that, I am all for reducing parking. In certain aspects, housing is not one of them. I feel like housing, any apartment building you go look at, the streets are clogged with overflow cars, and it's just not, I, I don't think reducing parking in residential is a good idea. But other than that, I, I commend the applicant on their, their creativity for this. I wish motels were doing better. I can't, I'm not gonna debate your market research. Obviously, you know your research and, and what's going on with that, but I just say, keep being creative.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Any other comments, observations? Yes, Ms. Jensen?
I am ready to make a motion, or three, unless there's someone else who wants to speak.
Anyone else have comments before Ms. Jensen makes her motion? All right.
Okay, I'll start with item number one. I move that we recommend a negative recommendation or a denial to the city council to change the general plan from commercial to residential for the Super 8 Motel, located at 1555 North Canyon Road in the general commercial zone.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Do we have a second to Ms. Jensen's motion?
It's seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Phillips? All right, all those in favor of a recommendation for denial to municipal council on item one as stated by Ms. Jensen's motion? Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Knudson?
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous. We will forward a recommendation for denial to municipal council on item number one. That takes us to item number two, for the zoning change from commercial to campus mixed-use. Ms. Jensen?
I'm happy to keep going.
Thank you.
I make a motion for item number two, that we recommend forwarding a recommendation of denial to the city council for the request for a zone change from general commercial to campus mixed-use for the Super 8 Motel located at 1555 North Canyon Road in the Carterville neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Do we have a second for Ms. Jensen's motion?
Aye.
Seconded by Mr. Knudson. All those in favor of forwarding a recommendation for denial on item two to municipal council as stated in Ms. Jensen's motion? Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Knudson?
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous. So that's unanimous. We will forward a recommendation for denial of item two to municipal council. And that leaves item three. Ms. Johnson?
I'll take it. I would like to make a motion that we deny the project plan approval to convert the existing Super 8 Motel to married student housing in the proposed campus mixed-use zone located at 1555 North Canyon Road in the Carterville neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second for Ms. Johnson's motion?
All seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Henry. All those in favor of denying approval of item three as stated in Ms. Johnson's motion? Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
And Ms. Johnson, aye. So that's unanimous. Item three is denied or not approved.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your input. We'll see what we can do to make some changes and come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washburn. Good evening. All right, that leaves items four and five. I will read the items four and five in together because they are also related. So item four, Robert Steele requests a zone change from A 1.1 to R 1.10 for 3.75 acres of land located approximately 1487 West 990 South in the Sunset neighborhood. And Robert Steele, item five, requests preliminary subdivision approval for a one-lot subdivision in a proposed R 110 zone located at approximately 1487 West 990 South in the Sunset neighborhood. Mr. Ardmore will present both items four and five.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. So the property, just to orient you, because the address doesn't make a lot of sense. The Footprinters Park there to the east and south of the property. To the northwest is the Century Home Development. That was passed as the Kelshaw Lane subdivision. So those are currently being built. Those are R 1.8, single-family detached homes. And the property that is in front of you for decision and recommendation is this. So there's four different parcels at the end of what will be 990 South. The road is not yet completed. Here's a zone map, current zone map for the property. It's in agricultural zone, A 1. Here's the R 1.8 from the Kelshaw Lane. And here's the facilities for the park. And then in the general plan, it's residential, but it also has the layer. If you recall, this is part of the Southwest area plan that was adopted by the council. So that's what this extra bubble of residential is, and this says existing park. You just don't see all that in the frame. So the zone change is being requested, so the applicant can subdivide the land. What you see on this slide is kind of a concept, a vicinity plan for how it could develop. This property here, all of this up north, is currently subdivided and being built on. And this road is completed to a point where it becomes dirt. And this is kind of the second phase of the Kelshaw Lane subdivision. So this is where you would access this proposed lot. It's highlighted in red. What I want to make note of is even though the applicant is requesting a zone change for all of this land, he's only proposing a one-lot subdivision at this time, kind of waiting for the future to subdivide and build on the rest of it. So there's a zoom in of that. And this slide shows you exactly the parcel, the one parcel that he would be proposing for subdivision, the, the road access and utility access there. And you saw this in your staff report, but I just wanted to have it up in case anybody didn't have it transcribed. It's the applicant's explanation of the proposal. The proposal does meet the general plan for the area. The Southwest area plan meets both those. With the density of R 110, it meets that four units per acre desired in the Southwest area. Steph finds that what's being shown is consistent with the development in the area and the future land use plan, compatible with the general plan policies and goals, and doesn't really see any adverse impacts of applying this zone to this property. So we've recommended approval for the zone change in itself. However, with the subdivision that you'd be making the decision off, there's a couple of conditions that you can see. This is still going through a staff review, known as a coordinator review committee. So we'd want that to be completed prior to any approval of subdivision plat. And the second one is that we would want that road, that 990 South here, to be built to completion and for the utilities to be laid out to completion to access this proposed lot before the plat was recorded at the county. So we feel comfortable if those two conditions are accepted to recommend an approval on the subdivision as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ardmore. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Ardmore?
Yes, I have one, Deborah.
Mr. Phillips?
The road completion, are, are you talking just in front of the one lot or the, or the entire sub, proposed subdivision?
So we would just need it to come down from 1600 West to the eastern edge of this one lot. It can be, it can be dealt with on a turnaround, either cul-de-sac or some kind of turnaround system for fire. But we would just need it to be built to that point.
How long do they feel before they will complete the eastern part of the subdivision?
Ms. Knutson, if you didn't hear him, he's asking how long till the rest of the project would be completed. He doesn't have a date on that. He doesn't anticipate that being in the next four or five years even. He just wants to get this one lot to build a home on and save the rest for the future.
Ms. Johnson?
When you said that he just needs to have something for emergency vehicles to turn around, would he be required to have curb and gutter for that section as well? Or just the part right in front of his house?
David, I see David Day is on here. Maybe we can have him answer that one.
Mr. Day?
Yes, normally what we would do is have them complete the frontage of their lot and then beyond their lot, create a temporary turnaround until they were ready to continue the road system as it's shown there.
But the temporary turnaround doesn't have to be finished out like to the regular road standards?
Yeah, it just has to be able to support a fire truck. So normally what we see is a road base with a recycled asphalt put on there so that it's able to support the fire truck to turn around. Also, you're talking about 990 South. That project has, has got all the utilities in the road. However, the, the owner of that subdivision, Century Homes, is trying to build out that north section of their subdivision first. And then they'll complete this south end and record the plat of this southern piece, as Aaron described. So we're not sure when that is going to happen. And that's why Aaron made that comment, that we would need to have that as part of the condition.
Because it's possible Mr. Steele will have to do that before Century Homes gets to it, is what you're implying?
Yeah, and I, I would recommend that he wait till they do it. It's very expensive for a single lot to build all that.
I had another question, Deborah. Can I go ahead with it?
Yes, please, Ms. Johnson.
I just want to clarify, looking at the big map, the land use map, I think it's page seven of item number four. I don't know what that matches with on your slides. But the land to the north of this area that he's requesting zoning change for shows that it's A 1.1. And I think you said that that area has already been subdivided and is being built. So that was a subdivision that was previously approved, Mr. Ardmore?
No, so sorry to clarify. The subdivision that's been approved, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay, so that is this coming through here. And then just this road coming over to access these lots. So this is not part of the Kelshaw Lane. That's just kind of a conceptual idea that this applicant thought. As part of this, the zone change checklist, the applicant is supposed to show how the vicinity could be built out. So that's what he's trying to show in this area. That's, that's not part of the Kelshaw Lane, so it's still ag land.
So Mr. Steele owns that land, but that's not anything we're discussing tonight. That's just a possibility for the future.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff commissioners? I'll just comment that I, I know we're not considering the subdivision overall plan. We're only looking at plating one lot. And I would hope that when the applicant is ready to build out, that we do not any longer allow cul-de-sacs. So it might be good to let him know that, you know, in advance.
Ms. Johnson, in this particular case, that's City Park property that was, that was purchased with federal conservation funds. And it's, would be very difficult for us to push a street through there. So this is one of those rare cases where there really just isn't an alternative.
So he could not connect to the street that's south of 990 South?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
We would have, we would have asked him to show that as a stub if it was possible.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I noticed the property, some of the residential adjacent to it's R 8. And this one's being proposed for R 10. And I'm just, could you help me understand the differences between, generally?
Sure, so the R 1 designates a single-family detached product. The numbers behind that is the minimum square footage of the lot. So R 1.8 is a minimum 8,000 square foot lot. And R 110 is a minimum 10,000 square foot lot. So these are a little bit bigger than what was approved in Kelshaw.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions, commissioners? All right, seeing none, I will invite Mr. Steele to present his project and answer any questions or concerns he may have heard from the commissioners.
Pretty straightforward on our end. I think staff did a great job at presenting it. If you guys have any questions, happy to answer any questions you might have for us.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Steele? I'll give you a few more moments if we have any questions.
Deborah, I was just wondering if, if Mr. Steele knew somewhat of the timeframe that he was looking at the rest of the plotted subdivision that we were looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Steele.
We don't necessarily have a timeframe now. The one lots for a, a daughter and son-in-law. The others are, I mean, in the future, we, we really don't have any plan right now to, to further develop it.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for Mr. Steele, commissioners? All right, seeing none, I will open it up to public comment at this time. Any neighborhood chair comments?
No comments from neighborhood chairs. And currently no public comments, so we'll give it a minute.
Thank you.
Deborah, can we note that Dave Anderson has joined us on the
Yes, welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. I apologize for being late. Just to be clear, no conflicts for me.
Okay, there are no additional public comments.
Great, thank you so much. We will close items four and five to public comment at this time then and turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion, questions, comments, motions. Commissioners? Ms. Johnson?
I was trying to wait and let someone else have a turn first, but apparently I'm just gonna open my mouth again. I would like to just say, as we discuss this, that I noticed in that document that Mr. Ardmore put on the screen that had the plating information on it. There was a letter written by the applicant, and he had stated that he wanted the R 110 instead of R 1.8 because they wanted it to be a lower density, because they intended to build it out to family. And I loved that. One of my big problems with zoning, changing zones from agricultural to residential is that often it's not done gradually. And I feel like going to R 110 is the most logical step in a, with neighboring agricultural areas. So I like that. So it's a good density, it's a gradual change, and it's a good use of a property that is honestly surrounded by other uses and is very unlikely to ever be used as agricultural on a wide scale.
Excellent point. Any other comments, commissioners? Don't be shy. I'll just add that I think it, it works to achieve the goals of the Southwest neighborhood plans. So I would support approval of those.
I'm sure I think I'm ready to make a motion. I move that we recommend that the proposed zone change, item number four, on the agenda tonight be approved.
Thank you. So Mr. Anderson's motion is that we forward positive recommendation on item four. Robert Steele requests a zone change from A 1.1 to R 1.10 for 3.75 acres of land located approximately 1487 West 990 South in the Sunset neighborhood. Do we have a second for Mr. Anderson's motion?
All seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Knutson. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to council on item four stated in Mr. Anderson's motion? Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, aye, so that's unanimous, we'll forward a positive recommendation to municipal council on item number four. That leaves item number five, which is for a project preliminary subdivision approval. Do we have a motion on item number five? Ms. Jensen?
I'm actually not going to make a motion, I just wanted to ask one more clarifying question. The staff recommended that the concerns by all the departments that haven't finished reviewing it be addressed before it was approved and that the road and utility improvements be made. Is that too much hanging on it to approve it now, or are those conditions fairly meaty, like do they hold through whatever comes?
That's not a problem, those are benign requirements.
So we're okay saying exactly as you worded it there, and this will go forward without a hitch?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on item five? Or any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Anderson?
Item number five, I move that we recommend approval of the preliminary subdivision subject to the two conditions that are identified in the staff report being addressed.
Well, actually, the approving or disapproving of item five, or continuing?
Thank you, let me change that then to a motion to approve the proposed preliminary subdivision, subject to the applicant addressing the two conditions that are provided in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Anderson's motion to approve item five, Robert Steele requests preliminary subdivision approval for a one lot subdivision in a proposed R110 zone located approximately 1487 West 990 South in the Sunset Neighborhood. Included in that motion are staff recommendations that, one, all remaining CRC concerns be addressed. And two, that the road and utility improvements on 990 South be built to properly, to property edge of the proposed lot prior to recording of the plat. Do we have a second on item number five?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Jones. All those in favor of approving item five is stated Mr. Anderson's motion. Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Knudsen?
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous, item number five is approved. Thank you, Mr. Steele. All right, that leaves the last item of the evening, and Mr. Pepperoni is going to lead on item eight.
It is that time of the year that we need to have a change in the leadership of the planning commission, according to your bylaws and rules. Each summer, there should be an election of a new chair and vice chair. So this time I'll just open it up to the planning commission members to nominate a chair and a vice chair for us to vote on those positions for the next year.
Great, I'll start.
Give us some details about what that involves, maybe you're about to do that, Deborah?
Basically, the chair leads the leads the hearings, the public hearings. There are also sometimes joint meetings, working meetings with the city council, and typically the chair takes lead on those, although everyone is always welcome to contribute to the discussion. You're basically the point person with development services. It's not a huge time commitment. I have developed a little very messy cheat sheet that that I created when I started serving as chair because I wanted to make sure I got everything right, and it just helps to have a little checklist of the procedure. It's pretty straightforward. If the chair is not able to host the meeting, then the vice chair is the substitute and the vice chair then hosts the meeting. So that's about it in a nutshell, and the appointment is supposed to be for how long, Mr. Pepperoni, a year?
One year.
Yeah. So I think I've overstayed my welcome.
I think the script that Ms. Jensen has developed as the chair is very appropriate and helpful, so if she wouldn't mind sharing out with the next chair, I think that would be great.
Absolutely. And typically in the past, the vice chair is promoted to be the chair because they've had that opportunity to lead hearings in the past, so.
I heard that Dave has been in that position for three years, does he not want to be promoted? I mean, no one really wants to be promoted in this situation, but
Deborah would never give up the gavel in the past, so.
Oh, Bill, that is so rude. How long have I been asking for an election?
Stop doing such a good job.
It's been three years. I think. So I would like to nominate Mr. Anderson.
I would have, I second that.
I'm comfortable with it. It's going to force me to be more patient than I typically would be, which is probably a good thing.
Any other nominations, commissioners?
Yeah, if I could just say honestly, I've really appreciated some of the newer commissioners that have joined us, as well as folks that came on about the same time as me, or maybe a little bit after. I really like how everybody is engaged. We have a couple of folks that honestly, I think are a little bit more engaged than some of the rest of us. But with that being said, I think we have a lot of people that would run the meeting very appropriately, and I don't think we can miss necessarily.
We have a very good group of commissioners. I will attest to that. Mr. Pepperoni?
Wait a minute, Mr. Knudsen, can you say that something aside?
Deborah, I would like to nominate Laurie. I have a hard time with her last name.
Urkiaga.
Urkiaga, to be the vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. I would second that.
Can we do that if she's not here?
That's when you do it.
Sure.
I think Laurie would be a very good, a very good vice chair, she was right before she came to the planning commission, she was chairing the TMAC committee. So she's cool and very knowledgeable, and I think she would be very good as a vice chair. So Mr. Pepperoni?
No other nominations, let's try to take off.
You're in charge.
Do we need to second the nomination for Laurie?
I believe Commissioner Jensen, the other Commissioner Jensen did that, is that right?
I did second for Laurie, yes, as vice chair.
So let's just first vote on Mr. Anderson's chair. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Let's vote on Mr. Urkiaga as the vice chair, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, very good, thank you very much for taking care of that business, and thanks for your help tonight at this meeting, it went very well.
Bill and Deborah, can I mention one thing real quick before we sign off?
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
So I end up spending a lot of time in a lot of public meetings. And I say this being somebody that typically is not overly complimentary. But truly, Deborah runs our meetings, or has run them, as well as I think anybody that I've ever been around. I mean that, I mean truly, I think everybody feels like they've been respected, they're given the appropriate opportunity. Just the way that you manage the discussion, keep us on track. It really is something that I've appreciated, and you've made being a commissioner a lot easier for me.
Thank you so much for that. I will say honestly, it's been a great experience for me to actually chair the meetings, I learn at every hearing from staff, from all of you, from members of the public, from the applicants, it's been very worthwhile, and I very much enjoyed it and appreciated the opportunity to chair, so. I am certain that you will feel the same way at the end of your term as well. Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
You've got big shoes to fill, Dave.
Not going to fill them, I'll take a swipe, but.
And I think you have the cheat sheet, but I'm happy to share it again if you need it.
You've already had to send it to me three times, so I put it in a place last time where I wouldn't lose it, so thank you.
Of course. Well, shall we make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
You motion to adjourn, do we have a second to the motion?
I will make a second.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. Hearing is now adjourned, thank you, commissioners.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.